All right, I'd like to call to order the April 6th New Canaan Board of Education meeting. First up is to approve the minutes from our last meeting on March 30th. Is there a motion? Cherry, second. Julie, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Next is to review and approve our agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion? Brendan, second. Diana, all in favor? Okay, seems like there's a bit of a delay. Public comment. Pursuant to Executive Order Number 7B by the Governor on March 14th, 2020, the town of New Canaan is modifying the procedures followed for public comment and attendance at town meetings during the coronavirus pandemic. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject.
We are running this meeting as a webinar, so to the attendees, any attendee who would wish to speak, there's an option to lower, to raise your hand, and I ask you to raise your hand, and then I will unmute your microphone so you can speak. Ms. Richardson will be timing for two minutes. And we'll let you know. So, yep, first up is Heather Moore. Heather.
Unmute myself. Hi, can you see and hear me?
We can hear you.
Or hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I guess you can't see me, but that's okay. Should you be seeing me? No, okay. So this is Heather Moore from 10 Snowberry Lane. I am, of course, incredibly disappointed that the town council cut the Board of Ed budget by over $1 million, and therefore the funding needed to implement healthy start times this fall. However, one thing was made clear by the outpouring of support from parents. Change needs to be made. While I completely understand that there is no longer funding to implement the proposed scenario, there is another option that was considered early on in the process that was virtually cost neutral. It could achieve the majority of goals set forth by the Healthy Start Times Initiative, including an 8:30 a.m. start time for grades 7 through 12, meeting the guidelines set by the AMA, CDC, and AAP. Given the uncertainty of our current health crisis, I would think at a minimum, moving forward to meet the medical guidelines this fall should still be a high priority. I would really like to say for the record that there is a way to do this at little to no cost, and it changes very little from the original plan. If we move east or west school to the third tier with fifth and sixth, we achieve all of the same goals except the goal of getting elementary schools onto the same schedule. And that goal does not impact any child's health. It would seem that relieving a few thousand kids of chronic sleep deprivation would be worth having elementary schools on different tiers, at least for next year. So I would really like to know if you are going to pursue this option. If so, message to parents, students, and prospective buyers would be strong and clear. New Canaan is serious about making our schools healthier and bringing them into compliance with medical guidelines. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak? Just looking to see if there are any hands raised. Okay, please state your name and address when you begin.
I think this is me, a little bit different.
Yep, that's you. Yes, go ahead. Oh, hold on. Jennifer?
It muted me.
Sounds like it.
Go ahead again.
Am I back?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So I am really happy to be in every one of you in the tiles on the screen and hope that all your family is healthy and well. And I want to thank you all for the incredible hard work and the efforts of our administration, teachers, and assistants in the e-learning program. It has truly been remarkable, and we are truly blessed, and I thank you. I want to go back to something that I said when I first thought in this matter, that when I had Jack, who's now just about 11, my pediatrician simply said, "There's only two things that are non-negotiable. One is sleep and safety." And regardless of the position that I've had until this time, I still believe that that is true, but I believe this includes sleep for all students. And the negotiables we have are things like maybe not all of the elementaries get to start at the same time, or maybe we have to revisit Saks being on two different schedules to get creative and look for other opportunities to find options to enable the start time initiative for all of our students so that New Canaan is known for watching out for the health and wellness of all of their students. I just want to remind you that there's been so much work that, you know, has been done, but also with other towns that we potentially could leverage or see or model, and that we do have options. And I think it's important to note that if we open up the objective that this is about the health and wellness for all of our students, while perhaps it started as a high school initiative, would go a long way to assuring many of the folks in town who have written letters that we have a concern. So I thank you again for continuing on this initiative and hope we get to a good place. And that's, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Kaylee, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you. Kaylee Boyd Sayer, 19 East Maple Street. This is my first time formally speaking at a BOE meeting, but I've been attending various meetings since 2018 because I was curious on what later school start times would look like for high school kids. I graduated from New Canaan High School in 1999 and was a three-sport varsity athlete. One of those sports I played was ice hockey with practice before school, which meant I was waking up before 5:00 a.m. on most days. I handled the balance of school sports and sleep perfectly fine, but I recognize all kids and teenagers are different. I also recognize that both academics and extracurricular are most likely more strenuous and time-consuming today than they were 20 years ago. Initially, I supported high schoolers getting more sleep, if that is what the majority of high schoolers and their parents wanted. As soon as I saw the proposal and how it would impact my elementary school kids, I immediately questioned everything about the process and the decisions. A survey was sent to all parents, but there was one mistake, that there was no option for neither is acceptable. I would bet that if you offered that option, you would have seen an overwhelming number from parents checking that box. It has also come to my attention that it has been said that not enough parents that are against the proposal are showing up to these meetings. And for those of you who may have forgotten what it's like to have younger kids, 7:00 p.m. is bedtime, so this time just doesn't work for parents with young kids. You have evidence from the petition against the proposal that there are hundreds of parents against this change, hundreds. We gather those signatures in less than 48 hours, and imagine how many more we could get when we're not scrambling due to timing. This just needs to stop. We cannot be told that there aren't enough people speaking against this. There are, they're just not being heard. Let's invite parents of elementary school, middle school, and high schoolers, as well as students, medical professionals, and educators to discuss how to address healthy school start times for all children. We can do better, and I believe we must do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Okay. Lisa? Okay, Lisa, you are on.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so I just wanted to say that I was also very disappointed in the town council's decision. I wrote a lot of letters and I, and I, you know, strongly urged them to try to pass the budget, and I really appreciated all of the hard work that you all did on, you know, gathering as much information as you can, as you could, and coming to, you know, what seemed to be the best compromise. At this point, though, I think what we've seen with all of the parents who have come forward recently is that health really is our biggest priority, and I'm just hoping that we can still find a way, you know, with maybe one of the other options to make that work for next year. And again, thank you for all of your hard work on this and on the e-learning, which has been fantastic. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ann. Oops, Ann, hold on, don't do anything. Okay, Ann, you're on.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I didn't have anything prepared to say. I guess I just wanted I need to chime in and just give my perspective about elementary students. I have two elementary students. I absolutely understand that 7:00 p.m. isn't a great time for people. We had many people with elementary students and preschoolers speak at the public hearing, so I just wanted to mention that, that it definitely isn't just a timing thing. To me, it really highlighted that a lot of people cared about the hearing in support of this. There are certainly, you know, I think you've heard for years now, there's a split on elementary families on this, but there are just as many, if not more, as we've heard over the last few weeks that are for this proposal, absolutely support it. I realized that my elementary kids will be seventh grader someday, and I just think to say, you know, the reason that it was a 10 to 1 emails to the town council or 43 to 5 at the public hearing was that it wasn't a convenient time for people, just doesn't, you know, really resonate well with all the families that did come out to speak. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Braddock Matthews.
I'm sorry, that's my company name. It's, this is Lisa Steele Stevenson. We live at 56, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, perfect. My name is Lisa Steele Stevenson. We live at 56 Kimberly Place in New Canaan, and we've been in town for a number of years, seven years, with a four-year-old and six-year-old. I just, I've never spoken publicly before. I run a business in New York City, and I just want to speak for a couple of things. A, I, I, I don't understand whether there are two views on this, but I, I do not think that the issue of property values for our town, should this change occur, have been studied in enough, by, with enough diligence by the town or the board or wherever it may be. I run a headhunting business in New York. I know a lot of this is anecdotal evidence, but what is not anecdotal is that the biggest demographic of people moving here and affecting our property values are at elementary age parents. When this topic comes up, I've heard anecdotally, again, it's anecdotal, people just, you can see New Canaan going off of their list, and I am so worried about our property values, especially in a time that we have so much economic uncertainty. Again, it might be wrong, but it's got to be studied. As somebody else said, we've got to study elementary school psychologists. We, I can no longer have dinner with my children. I'm a commuting mother. There are so few commuting mothers in this town. We will cut off that slice of small diversity for this town, and as you can hear, it makes me waver with tears. The other thing that I want to say is absolutely, the number of people who are against this is, is so much larger than what you're seeing. They don't have a venue to speak, and even if they do, they're not aware of it, they're busy. We, we, we need to understand the pressures of time. Again, it's not, it's, 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 it's not binary, it's not black and white, but I can assure you, the number of people upset by this and who do not want it are not being represented by what's being seen and heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other attendees who wish to speak? Okay.
Great, thank you. Next is reports and recognition with an update on our school closures. Dr. Lutti.
Yes, and I will, of course, welcome any member of the cabinet to jump in, or if you, and welcome your questions after. Just certainly makes sense to have this item on the agenda each time we're together to give a quick update on, on what's happening and to give the board opportunity to ask any questions or provide any feedback. So far, as our Phase 2 of our distance learning platform is still running, it's working, seems to be working very well. You know, we continue to learn, continue to make adjustments as need be. The professional learning opportunities that we've been providing for staff have been very well received on our Wednesday for the K-4, and then on Thursday for grades five through eight. The, you know, all of us are figuring out how best to stay connected to our teams and to our departments and to our folks, you know, the many of us went into education because we have an extrovert streak in us, and it can be a bit challenging not to see people throughout the course of our day. So we continue to use video conferencing wherever it makes sense and make sure that we keep those connections. As you know, there's a school of thought and leadership, one belief around distributed leadership, and I keep telling my team, this is the extreme distributed leadership model in education, but it's working well. We continue to deliver the meals on Mondays and Wednesdays for about 130 children. Again, we've got more than just lunch in there. There's enough for almost two meals there with breakfast and other pieces, and those deliveries continue to go well. We're continually evolving our protocols as well. You know, I'm on the phone every day with the Health Department, with others, with our district medical advisor, Dr. Pierce, with Dr. Reed is on the call as well, and we talk about CDC protocols, Health Department protocols, to be sure that we, we remain responsive to any changes as that continues to evolve. So we do it in the moment. We talk with them daily, and we continue to evolve our protocols as we learn more. This last Friday, we extended the third quarter at the high school and at Saks by a week, which takes us right up to the Thursday of this week. That extension gives a little more time for work to get in, a little more time to balance things out, and then we go into the four-day weekend, beginning with Good Friday and ending with the Monday after Easter, and then in session Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. The grades for the third quarter are going to be traditional, the same way that we've done grades at Saks and the high school for the third quarter. We've spoken with a number of the staff, we've received some feedback from folks, really saying that the amount of time that we were in session for the third quarter was sufficient to give us a good baseline, and then the work that went in from there is enough to, to be able to give those grades. So we'll do the same thing for Q3 that we've done in the past and take it from there. The governor is expected to provide an update to the state and to school districts by April 10th, as far as the duration of the close is concerned. We're hearing some things that he is going to extend that. We don't know exactly how long it's going to be. We're hoping that if the announcement comes on the 10th, I guess at this point, it's stay tuned on that. But I think it is widely anticipated that the close will be extended at a minimum through the end of the month. Not sure about anything from there. The commissioner has been working very closely with CAPS, who's been working very closely with the Board of Directors, which I'm on, to sort of figure out what guidance districts would benefit from. I anticipate in the next couple of days to receive guidance on grades themselves. If the, if the close is a longer duration than the next couple of weeks, I anticipate that guidance will be more directive. If that's not the anticipation, it may be more flexible. We'll see what comes. Excuse me. For us, again, internally, we continue to communicate, starting at the top, and then working through our principals, through our departments, through our individual teachers, and that flow of information seems to be working well. And I continue to suggest people go to our website to learn more or if they have any, any questions. All of the, the communications from me and at the district level are all archived on the website, so people can go back and see chronology of those, because sometimes there are decisions and other pieces communicated in that that could be helpful to know in the future. And at that point, I'll open it up to questions.
Okay. Cherry?
Well, I don't have a question, it's just a comment. I just want to thank you and your team for the continued thorough and thoughtful communications that are going out. I mean, I just have gotten a lot of positive feedback from parents, and I know that's not necessarily the norm or the case in other districts. So I feel like these are very uncertain times, and you're communicating to the best of the ability so that everyone is, is feeling calm and secure and knowing as best they can what's to come. So also, I just want to say, you know, kudos to you and the cabinet for the leadership role they're playing with the town and with the mental health committee and with the delivering the lunches and everything that you're doing. Really, it's just quite remarkable to stand back and see everything that the district leadership is providing to the town and to the whole community at this point.
Thank you, thank you. You know, it's, it's a great place, and the coordination from the EOC has really been excellent, from Mike Handler to Jen and everyone that's involved with that in that group, Fred Baker, others. They've really done a wonderful job. Thanks, Jen. Jen? I'll unmute you. There you go. Okay, Jen. You can do it. Nope?
Oh, okay, yeah. So I, I just have one clarification regarding, well, first off, thank you very much. As Cherry just said, what you guys are doing is incredible. We're so grateful. I just had so many questions about the grading, and I know that you don't know right now, but would you mind just talking about the process? Like, are we going to be ultimately deciding? Is the, is the governor, is the state going to be telling us? Are you gonna, are we gonna, are we as a board gonna have input in this? Or like, can you just talk a little bit? Because I know there's a ton of concerned parents. Those are the ones that are pretty much reaching out. Everyone that has juniors and, you know, they're worried about college. And so I just wondered if you could just kind of talk a little bit about how you think this might, how this decision might be made.
Sure, I'd be glad to. I mentioned that it's the extreme distributed leadership model. It's also, another model is leading in uncertainty. And so what I'm going to say isn't necessarily with much certainty. It's just what I know today to be the case, which is the decision on grading will hinge, I think, in large part on the duration that we're closed. So until we have a sense of what that duration's going to be, it's very difficult to make a final decision around what the grading structure should be. I do believe that the guidance from the commissioner will be relatively strong because I do think that districts are struggling with this question. Now, as far as what the Board of Education's role will be in that, making that decision and the district administrative team's role in making that decision, I think we have to wait to see what comes out from the commissioner's office and from the governor, you know, in this regard. I will share that for the last couple of weeks, our counselors have been reaching out to different colleges and networking with counselors in all different districts to sort of pool their findings and the best information from schools. And almost to a college, to a university, they've said that they recognize and empathize with the situation that we're in, because they're in the same situation with their own students now, and they recognize that a decision to change the grading structure by any school district is not within a student's control, and that they will account for that in their application process as they look through admissions and as they work things through. The only organization that's been a challenge around this, as I understand it, at this point, is the NCAA, whose messaging has been that if districts go to pass fail, then in computing the GPA, they would use the lowest grade possible for a pass. That's, I imagine that'll change over time, but, you know, that's strictly been the NCAA for scholar, for college athletes. But every other school we've spoken with, from, you know, the Ivies on down, has really shared that they recognize and empathize with the situation that students are in and will not hold that against them in the admissions process. They are talking about letters of recommendation being more important. They're talking about other more qualitative types of data points being more important in the admissions process, and we'll, we'll continue to work with them and have those conversations. But our, our counselors are networking nationally and locally, and they're putting all of this together for us so that we go into it with our eyes open. I'm working with the, with the state, with superintendents around the state. One of the challenges, for what it's worth, is because of our location in Lower Fairfield County, we are experiencing things that other districts in the state are not experiencing yet. You know, the numbers of positive cases in Fairfield County are higher than other counties. New Haven County is the next, and then, but as you go upstate, fewer and fewer cases because, you know, it's working its way up as more positives come, and they haven't gotten to where we are, just because of where they are geographically. So engaging in a statewide conversation about grading is still a little challenging, but as, you know, things go on, if we learn about the duration of the close, we'll have more information and more, a better context to try to guide our decision-making in the event that it is our local decision to make.
Right, and just one more thing to add, you know, a couple, some more things I'm hearing also, where people are worried about the motivation of students to continue the e-learning, like if they feel like they're not achieving a grade for it, like why bother kind of attitude? So, you know, I don't, I mean, I guess we'll just come to that when we get there, if that's, you know, the case.
Yeah, you know, I think that's right. We'll come to that when we get there. Of course, as educators, we always hope it's the, the learning and the process and the discovery and the, all of what we do that makes it worthwhile and that the grade is a, a part of it, but not the main driver. We'll have, we'll be, work, continue to work very hard to create engaging lessons for our students participating.
Thank you.
They should kind of be working towards getting grades, right? Like, we should, the message should be that they're going to get grades, so they work that way.
Depends, depends on, you know, what, what comes from the state and what kind of guidance or direction we're given and what we can do with it.
Okay, Diana?
I mean, they, yeah, just, just one other comment on that. I mean, I think we have to realize in the broader context, that I kind of referenced this in our last meeting, in broader context of, you know, districts all over the state and the country, you know, in many different paths post, post-high school. You know, there, there are a lot of puts and takes on this outside of New Canaan. And while, you know, there are some things that, you know, families and parents may want to do here, I think in the broader, you know, context, it's hard to make decisions for some kids who, you know, may not have access to the same resources that kids in New Canaan have. So I'm sure that's one of the things that's going into all of these decisions, whether it's the state or, you know, the various colleges as well.
Yeah, I do think that's, for what it's worth, I think, I think that's well said. For instance, the, the tens of thousands of laptops that were donated are scheduled to arrive around the end of April or the beginning of May for Bridgeport and some of our city, city schools. So just right there, that it's been a while since they've been, been able to log in to participate. They're using, doing some other supplemental work, but it is a different context as you move around the state.
And, you know, I, I think it shouldn't be lost on any of us that, you know, we, we've just gotten out of a pretty extensive conversation about mental health on, on all of our kids, and, and, you know, it needs to be taken into the context of along, if we end up in a long-term shutdown, there are going to be many different issues beyond grades that we're going to be dealing with, with students, even in our district. So I think, you know, we can all appreciate, you know, that we want to put our kids in the best position to, you know, be attractive to the best universities that they have the ability to, to be accepted into. But, but we also want our kids to be healthy, and, and so I think, you know, we have to, everyone has to take that perspective as we, you know, look into this going forward. And I'm sure that's what the Commissioner of Education is going to be looking at too, so.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that. I think that's, that's
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you for that. I think that's, that's, that was part of our conversation. Teachers may become ill, parents may become ill, students may become ill. And, you know, if they're ill for a week, recover, do we really want them spending time being stressed about trying to make up work in order to, to meet a grade? So, you know, there are many unknowns as we go into this, and we do want to be sensitive to all of them as much as we can. Yep. Thank you. Penny, did you have your hand up? Would you like me to unmute you? I got you.
Okay. So I was just wondering, you know, what you were thinking about with the award ceremony, if any parents were thinking about that. Obviously, if we're closed, we wouldn't have a ceremony, but would the whole procedure in terms of giving out awards to juniors and seniors sort of go forward? And they would just be awarded somewhat differently? I don't even know if you've thought about that yet.
Yeah. Actually, we've begun, just because it takes an awful lot of thinking and planning, thinking about award ceremonies, thinking about graduation, thinking about, you know, those types of things because, not because we know anything for certain, but just because, you know, we've gotten where we are because we always try to plan ahead and, you know, try to anticipate things in advance. So we have started to have those conversations, and while we wouldn't necessarily have a ceremony that we're, like we're used to, we certainly would look, look to go forward with the awards for our kids. They're so important. It's such an important part of their senior experience, the junior experience, you know, same with our scholarships. I've been working with the Exchange Club, with Tori and others, to get that schedule in place so that we can continue forward with those scholarships. I know the Scholarship Foundation continues to discuss and think about, you know, how best to move forward. So when we're not sort of, you know, on calls with EOC and solving all kinds of problems, we're trying to plan forward to, to be sure we can keep as much normalcy around that as possible, even, you know, while working remotely.
And then I just wanted to echo Sherry's comments. I know the whole board is so grateful for everything the team is doing, the cabinet, all the teachers, the enthusiasm, keeping, connecting with all the students. It's so important, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Looks like those are all the questions and comments. Thank you, everyone. Now we'll move into the budget update. With Dr. Lutti.
And most, if not all of us, were online, so I won't go, go for too long here. But as you know, that last week, the town council voted to adopt Board of Education's budget. That was reduced an additional 1.1 million, 143,000 dollars from the Board of Finance, which brought our total reduction from the Board of Ed's budget that was brought forward to 1,895,136 dollars. Of that, approximately 577,000 is from the change that we, we agreed to make with the Board of Finance as far as the reserving on our healthcare. And what we had agreed to was to switch the 60-40 ratio. So in our current agreement, the Board of Ed holds 60% of the reserve, and the town allocates the other 40% on its, of our reserve on its general fund. And we agreed to flip that, so the Board of Ed would hold 40% of that reserve, and the town will allocate 60% out of the general fund. So with that removed from the Board of Finance reductions, they reduced our operating 175,000. And then the town council reduced the operating budget another 1,143,000. So as we've, you know, begun looking at and talking about the budget, and as you know, in the town council meeting itself, when asked the question, you know, I shared that a sizable cut in our budget, a sizable reduction to our request would necessarily result in our not being able to go forward with the proposed school start time initiative. The goal throughout unfortunately seemed to be getting to 2.5% for the Board of Ed. I think that was the goal going in. At least that's a number that I heard all the way back in January. And essentially, that's what the town council's reduction does, brings us on the operating side, right, to 2.5%. The insurance with that shift that we just mentioned, and the great experience we've had based on the information that Joe shared with us in our board meeting and that we shared with the Board of Finance as well, taking the savings in the insurance and the operating budget going forward, we are a total year-to-year overall change of a negative 0.61 or 0.62% change. So it'll actually cost less money to run the operation next year than it does this year because of, again, no savings, but also these reductions here. The, of course, we're disappointed about the result. We certainly recognize that, that we're in pretty extraordinary times. I was grateful for the support that we received, you know, from Kevin Monahan, the first selectman, I think Todd Laviare provided some support for us as he spoke with the town council about the strength of New Canaan's financial position. But ultimately, town council just felt that they, it was best for them to, to make that reduction. The start times piece, as you know, we did three years of study, extensive research, many focus groups, lots and lots of work around this, and we felt that it is the right plan, you know, right plan for all of our kids, K-12. As I've said multiple times, we would not have brought forward a plan that advantaged one and disadvantaged another. Of course, individual circumstances differ across the board, and we recognize that. I mean, some of this was better for some teachers and worse for other teachers and all of that. But ultimately, you know, we were really driven by what we believed was best educationally for the children in our system. The, excuse me, and we're very disappointed that we're not going to be able to put it in place. Because I do, I don't know if you are hearing this, but I continue to hear feedback from parents and from some kids saying, "Thank you for starting our day at 8:30 during the distance learning." And that's, you know, that makes me smile. That's good feedback. I do think going forward, the Board of Education, every spring, reviews its district goals, excuse me, and looks to make adjustments there. Sorry. A lot, too much, too many meetings today. So the, each, each spring, the Board of Ed looks at the district goals, looks to make adjustments, refine initiatives, do that kind of work. That helps to set our direction, and I think that that is probably the best time for the Board of Ed to review all of what sort of has occurred and what, what's, what we've done and where we are with the school start times and looking to making, making those changes, and then determining what the best path forward is. Unfortunately, while I certainly empathize with folks and feel very strongly, after all the research and everything we've learned about the importance of this, I also know that it takes time. It takes time to develop the routes. It takes time to develop them, test them, model them, to do, run the runs, to do that, the work that's required to successfully make a whole systems change. And begin, here we are on April 6th, and I'm, I would recommend unfortunately against it. I think that the, as you know, the plan that we have was a year and a half on the books. You know, we made some tweaks here and there, but, you know, the, the framework of that was around even last budget cycle. I remember going to the elementary PTC budget presentation in January of 2019. And this was part of the discussion that we had about the elementaries going first and, you know, the timing and all of that. So this, this is an idea that's been on the table for a while and that we've spent quite a bit of time on. Again, it's, it evolved, but just, I know that there are lots of different ideas that people may have. But if we, if you look at the slides that are on the website from the presentations from TAS and others, everything comes at a cost. So even that flip of a, of the tiers, if you look to move the times, it, it comes at a cost, no matter what you do. That one was about 300,000, but that was in a best-case scenario. And one of the things I would remind, you know, everybody, that, you know, school start times are different than bus times, as Roy Walder taught all of us very well. So one of the ways that we make our current system work now, with the number of buses we have, is we have students at the high school and at Saks that are dropped off 20, 25 minutes or so before the start of the school day. Because those buses have to drop them off at the school in order to get back out to the other side of town and do some pickups to bring in the second tier. If you put SAC, elementary schools on that first tier, you cannot make the times that we have without dropping off elementary-age children 25, 30 minutes earlier than their start time. And you can't really do that with elementary-age children on the bus. In high school, you drop them off. They go to the cafeteria. They go to the library. They're okay. But at the elementary schools, to drop students off that early, they need supervision, structure, routine, all of that. You also would have those students on that first tier waiting in the dark in that point because the, in order, you'd have to drop off early. So everything backs up, and you have significant students being picked up before 7 o'clock like we do now. So it really, there's a lot, there's, we've looked at, as you recall, 12 or 14 different sort of scenarios and sort of pieced all together. And we really just determined that trade-offs in each one were really more than we were willing to make on behalf of the kids. That doesn't mean that, you know, we're, we're so married to what was in front of us that we wouldn't be willing to continue looking at things. But, you know, after three years, we feel pretty confident that those constraints aren't, we're not going to be able to will them away. And the speed limits and the, where the kids live and the number of buses we have and the, the times all stay constant. So we'd love to have every student start school at 8:30. We'd love to have every student be able to do it between 8 and 9 o'clock. It just doesn't work. I mean, that's, we've tried those scenarios. And as you know, the, you know, and the grouping Saks together, we were there together, working through and trying to do that. So open to all the ideas, open to continue to kind of analyze and look at as we go into next year, if that's the direction the board wants to go. But I'll tell you, when you're making whole systems change, you don't try to do it in a couple of months. You've really got to put the time into it. So I would be very hesitant to recommend trying to put something else in place that hasn't been tested and vetted and modeled and driven and analyzed in all the right ways. Because when districts get this wrong, it's wrong for a lot of kids for a long time, and we need to get it right.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, I mean, I, on the start times piece, I, I'm obviously very disappointed. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about what the town council did. I just have to get off my, you know, off my shoulders. It's just, it's, it's been pretty disappointing, to say the least, for the last few days, to think about what they did on Thursday. But as it relates to the start times decision, I completely agree with you as to where we are today. I think it would be a mistake for us to try to force something through that is suboptimal in many ways and probably wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be pulled off and, you know, in sort of a smooth fashion for all of our kids. And that's why we took so long with, you know, the evaluation of what we were going to plan on doing. That's why it took two to three years, and we did all the, did all the, the research and talked to, you know, all the focus groups and people that we spoke with. So unfortunately, you know, what, what happened on Thursday night was just incredibly sad. You know, it's just a resident New Canaan, as a parent, you know, and as a member of the Board of Education, as someone who works really closely with all you as, all of you as administrators, knowing all the work that you and all the people within New Canaan Public Schools put in with, put into evaluating this option and, you know, dealing with, you know, opinions on all different sides. The fact that, you know, the town council would do what they did and come in over the top and shut that down, you know, in light of all that the New Canaan Public Schools do for the residents of this community, and the fact that we are, you know, not only performing at the absolute top level in the country, in the state, but we're doing that in an incredibly financially conservative way, incredibly conservative. I mean, we're, our budget now, even before the 1.14 million dollars out of the budget, we would have been up 1.7% on a compound annual basis for the five years ending next year, 1.7%. That's well below inflation. That means that we're reducing costs every year, every year for the last five years, we're reducing costs. So the town council seems to come in, you know, to these discussions like, you know, they need to, they need to cut our budget because we're spending too much. We need to bend the curve. We need to do this. We need to do that. No, we've, we've done that. We've done that for the last five years at a minimum. And probably beyond that, frankly. We're not spending more than the town spends as a percentage of the overall, you know, expenditures. The other thing, and I apologize for rambling on, I just, you know, I just feel like what, what was done on Thursday night was so wrong and against what the town wants. Regardless of what you think about school start times, it's about the money and where our town's priorities are. Two years ago, almost two years ago at this point, we, we had a joint town board and committee discussion on a Saturday, and we talked about doing a town survey. The reason we talked about doing a town survey is because we wanted to avoid the annual, you know, back and forth and sniping on the budget, particularly with such material numbers. There's always diligence that goes into, you know, making budgets and approving them, and we should do that. But we were trying to avoid wholesale changes, and we did the survey. And the survey came back and said 71, 72% of people in, in town chose to live here because of the public schools. The next on the list is, is the downtown village at 42%, and then family friendliness at 35%. So the idea that two-thirds of our town council says, actually, we're going to cut the school budget well below, put aside, you know, start times or anything else, we're going to cut it well below zero. And we're actually, you know, reduce the dollars year-over-year, which actually means putting aside, you know, anything that we're doing. It means that we're actually reducing what we're spending on a year-over-year basis. And their, their reasoning for that, I still don't understand at all. It's totally against what the town actually wants. So a number of the, the folks in the town council seem to be, you know, listening to what I think is a vocal minority in town and not actually standing up for what most people in town want, which is really, really shocking and disappointing. And I think most people in town would be, to the extent that they're, you know, following what's going on, I think would be very surprised to hear that their representatives are doing that on their behalf because it's just not what people want. The last thing I had to say, and I apologize for having to say this, but I, I just feel like I have to, which is, you know, it really irked me on Thursday night when, after, you know, some members of the town council voted to cut our budget by 1.14 million dollars and know that they were, you know, blocking start time change, which we feel like is so important for kids' health, in the middle of a health crisis, you know, sort of putting it on the crisis. When they heard, as Brian said, from Kevin and Todd and from Michael Chen, that the state of the town financially is incredibly strong. We don't have anything to worry about. We've always collected a 98.5% plus rate for all the taxes that we bill. Yet they, they said, "We're in a crisis." They're sending around emails before the meeting, you know, "Here's what's going on in Ridgefield in the state, this, that," versus thinking as leaders and saying, "Let's actually chart a course through this and spend money the way we should be spending it so that our kids are healthy, we have strong schools, and we're doing what our residents want, so people continue to, to move here and stay here." And the last piece, I probably said last more than once, but last piece is, you know, I just, you give this as, you know, truly offensive, which is, you know, cutting our budget 1.14 million dollars and then saying, "We love, we really love what you're doing in the New Canaan Public Schools. Keep doing it." It just, it just, you can't say that in same breath. If you love what we're doing in the New Canaan Public Schools, then support the public schools and get behind us when we ask for a budget that is reasonable. We didn't come and ask for a budget that was, you know, extraordinary, that was, you know, 3, 4, 5% budget increases like they're doing in many of our peer towns. We didn't ask for that. We asked for something very conservative. Sorry for rambling, but I felt like I had to get it off my chest.
Thanks. I may have mentioned this earlier. We were planning to follow the similar process that we've used in the past, where we'll look at things and bring it forward to the board in June as recommendations, and we'll work with the Resources Committee between now and then as well.
And we'll work with the resources committee between now and then as well. But generally, because I know Carl and Bob, we're not part of, this is your first budget cycle. So we generally will, you know, review, do some thinking, do what we can and need to do, and then bring it forward in June as recommendations for adjustments to budget. Other questions or feedback or thoughts? Penny?
I also agree that we need to keep with our current budget schedule, given what happened on Thursday night, which was a very disappointing result. I echo Brendan's comments and, you know, I look forward to what we can put in the goals next, for next year in terms of school start times and getting to a helping place for the students in New Canaan. I also, sort of on a, maybe not a technical point, but just so that we have a good institutional memory, I think we should, we had the sixty forty split in writing. And if we've now changed that to a forty sixty split, I think it's important that we reduce that to writing and have sort of an amendment to that. However, we need to do, so there's a recognition, we know exactly what meeting that happened at, because I have seen institutional memories sort of fail or falter in this town. And, you know, I'm comfortable with where we are with that agreement, but I would like to see it formalized.
Thank you, Penny, that's a great suggestion. We currently, we've been intending to take the existing agreement to literally change the sixty and the forty to a forty sixty, have Kevin and me both initiate it and date it, and everything else stays intact. So as our board, as our attorney on the board, does that sound appropriate?
I, I think that's good, I don't know if you want a reference to the Board of Finance meeting where it's changed, but as long as it's all in, in writing and agreed to by both parties, I think we'll be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, you had your hand up before?
I did, um, yeah, I mean, it's unfortunate that the start times might not make it. You know, I'd love to see, there's creative ways to make that still happen, I think people want it. I'd still like to see the elementary start by eight. You know, maybe there's savings this year, you prepay stuff, or maybe there's some kind of an agreement we could work out. I would think sub-budget's going to be less, there's, I don't know how much, how much money there is in this year's budget that's going to be, could be potentially an offset, and maybe that buys you another year, I don't know. But, but it's, it's, there's, you know, maybe ways to think about that. You know, I think, you know, I know there's, you know, if we still think it's, the health is the issue, and if that's important, maybe we should still try to shoot for it. I'm not sure what you meant by, you wouldn't recommend it, other than you can't find the money, that's a little different than, you still recommend that option, right?
I do, you know, that option, we've modeled, we've run, we've done, as we've done that work, unfortunately, you know.
I mean, I think there would have been a lot more people for it, especially on the elementary side, if we got that extra fifteen or twenty minutes in there. I know that's, I'm starting to sound like a broken record, but I think that's what people want. And, all right, that's it.
Okay, thanks, Bob, thanks. Sherry, did you have your hand up before, Sherry?
Yep, so I just want to echo some of Brendan's points, but I'm going to be a lot quicker than Brendan. There's a pause. So I just want to echo that I am also very disappointed in town council's decision. And while I do understand the economic uncertainty that's created right now by our, this global health crisis, it also seems that it was, it was driven by a goal that was communicated as early as December, December or January. So it's, it's very disappointed to see these severe cuts, cuts in our budget. And I just want to say, as it relates to the start times, that I was a strong component of the start times. I believe, I believe strongly in the science and, and I believe strongly that we should be compliant with the CDC recommendations. But the reality is that our budget, just to remind everyone, is about eighty-five, eighty-seven percent, correct me on the exact number, comprised of salary and benefits. So for, for Bob, for someone to say that we can still go forward with start times, given a 1.143 million dollar cut from the town council, it's just not realistic. Unfortunately, there are no magical, you know, answers that are no cost solutions. The one that some are suggesting that we go back to, which is keeping the tiers untacked, putting east and south first, putting fifth and sixth west last, is still at a cost of about $300,000. And, and just given how tight or lean our budget is, and that would still mean cutting teachers and programs. So I'm, I'm dismayed to say this, that we can't move forward with start times for, for the 2020, 21 school year. But I agree with Brian, when we do something, we want to, we want to implement an optimal solution and we want to do it right. And I just don't feel like the town council has put us in a situation where we can respond and do that for this coming school year. So, but again, I would encourage parents to go back to the town council and, and communicate and express your dismay to that governing board for, you know, the place that they've left us with. I do feel gutted that we're not able to implement the, the start time schedule that we had all agreed after three years of research was best for our 4,000 students and, you know, follows the CDC guidelines. So, you know, I, it's very disappointing that we're here, but I agree, Brian, that we can't, we, it's, it's impossible, given the way our budget is constructed for us to, to implement any other solution for this fall.
Thanks, Sherry. Jen, your hand was up before?
Yeah, so I was, I was going to say quite a lot of what Sherry said. I completely agree with both Brendan and Sherry, you know, the fact that this happened on Thursday is, honestly, I was kind of shocked and so disappointed. I commend the town council members that actually did support our budget. I know, you know, it's not always easy going against the grain, so we so appreciate your support. But unfortunately, you know, it wasn't enough and we're left where we are. And to, I mean, the amount of time and effort that we've gone into and all the research we've done, and this was so, it was so thoughtful and it's presentation and plan, and now we don't have the money to do it. And I just feel like we need to move on. I mean, of course, this should be in our goals, because it is a priority for us. But where we are in our budget, we just can't make it happen. Not to mention the amount of time and effort that your team has put into this is unbelievably extensive. And it's almost like nothing else, I mean, we have so many more other things right now that we need to focus on and to, to spend the time to be flipping and running more runs and we just don't have that time. And we can't ask our administrators to do this anymore, you know. So I just feel like we need to, we need to move on, it's sad, I'm so sad by it. But we need to move on and hopefully readdress it for the next budget season.
Thanks, Jen. Carl, did you have your hand up before?
I did, can you hear me?
We can.
Good. So I, I actually just wanted to, sort of like what I did last, the last meeting, just set the record straight on some of the numbers and be very specific on them, because again, there were some inaccuracies on Thursday night, and I don't think we can arrive at good decisions if, if people don't understand the numbers correctly and if they're not portrayed accurately. So that the headline focus is on the part of the budget that excludes healthcare benefits. So that was 81.1 million dollars, which they cited as a 2.5% increase, which is correct. You have to recognize that, I think as Sherry alluded to, 59.6 million dollars last year is in salaries and that number is 61.6 million dollars this year. If you exclude the salaries that were going to be required for the, the school start change. So that's a 3.3% increase. So the rest of the, for the rest of the budget, that nineteen million is actually a, a ten basis point, a 0.1% decrease for that, for that all in number. So that's the kind of, you know, constraint that we're talking about. I do think it's important to look at the total headline figure of 90.9. If you just look at it straight up, that's a sixty basis point absolute reduction, forget inflation, decrease over last year, and that's a result of holding that nineteen million flat, the 3.3% increase in salaries, and then the dividend that the work on the health benefits has paid in the, in the form of both required smaller contribution to the Internal Services Fund and then the Board of Education's willingness to flip flop the reserve, even though it's Board of Education members that personally actually are personally liable if there is any shortfall in that fund in meeting our, our teacher and our participants' healthcare needs. So if anyone on the town council or other boards want to come and join the Board of Education, come on in and take the, take the potential liability. So, and the last thing I want to say, and this, this I found really problematic, was that someone made the claim that, well, if you can come up with $300,000 as a give, it means you have some sort of slush fund, some funds in reserve, and you've been holding those back. And that can't be further from the truth. So that $300,000 that we were going to give is giving up real benefits that will be missed by certain participants in our educational system. It was not just $300,000 that we had put aside somewhere for a rainy day. It was real money that was allocated quite accurately to specific needs. That $300,000 is still now going to be used because the 950, we can claw back from pushing off school start times, the 300 is going to have to be found somewhere, and that's going to mean real cuts in services and actually people. So people need to, people need to understand that that's the way it works. There is no special pot of money hidden somewhere that can make up for this shortfall. It is going to cut into real goods and services that, that the Board of Ed provides. And people will be hearing about that in the coming weeks and months and bearing the price of it. I'm done.
Great, thank you, Carl. Julie, I saw your hand up? Good.
Can you hear me?
Got you.
Sort of tagging along to what Carl said and something that Sherry mentioned earlier, the other thing that I think is important to note that was brought up at Thursday's meeting was this idea of the town council doesn't tell us how to spend money, they just give us the bottom line number. And while true, I think it's important to note that in our planning, we, it was extremely careful. Every single line, as we all know, was scrutinized thoroughly to get it as lean as it could possibly get. So I know we've gotten some emails this week even suggesting, well, if it's still important, if school start times are still important, then surely we can find the money elsewhere. And sadly, that is not the case, or as Carl says, it comes at the expense of something, of many things that are, you know, that we've deemed important, necessary. So I think that's just an important point to make too, is that a lot of thought went into the budget to begin with. So, so the idea that we could find 1.143 million dollars elsewhere in our budget, it, it is just not possible. It is as lean as we can get it.
Thanks, Julie. Deanna, I think was next? I feel like a teacher back in the classroom.
Um, so I'm not going to say anything new that hasn't already been, been articulated. But something that's been troubling me, that has been articulated at sort of the town council level and also, you know, at some local coffees and then, you know, in, in a letter to the paper this week by a former town council member, suggesting that there were, that there were, you know, significant savings we could find, maybe in, in administrative costs and things like that. I think it's important for the community to understand that the success of this educational system has been built and developed over years with, working with our administrative team to, you know, do the best strategic planning and bringing the best programming to our students. That doesn't happen when you don't have a really talented administrative team working with gifted teachers. And we are the envy of our district. People in other high performing districts want to have what we have. And for people to suggest that we should dismantle that to save a few dollars, I think is unbelievably short sighted. You know, it's not an either or, and, you know, we have to decide as a community, do we want to do this or not? And it isn't by dismantling something else that has been very effective. So I just, I would like people to take that into consideration as they start to have opinions on how we might achieve start times.
Great, thank you. Rainey?
Yeah, just, just add on to what a number of folks said. I, I think it's telling in, in the dialogue around the budget that there's really, we, we give them so much detail in our budget. We go through so much, I mean, line items down to a few hundred dollars in our budget, there's so much detail. I think it's telling that throughout the process, year after year, we go through the budget, we answer a bunch of questions, and no one comes up with, on the town council or Board of Finance necessarily, like a big revelation that there's something that we haven't found, that we're moving, you know, relatively small dollars around. We're, you know, we're reallocating our Internal Services Fund between, between the school system and the town. That's a good indication that there's not much there, unless we're literally, as Deanna said, starting to dismantle portions of what we built. And I just keep going back to, what does this town want? What is this town built upon? And it's built upon, people move here for the public schools. So I just, it's really, it's just shocking to me that, that the town council said, okay, I understand all that, but, you know, we just have to cut, we have to get to two and a half percent. Why? Like, no, two and a half percent, the number's 1.143 million dollars, I mean, how arbitrary is that? How, you know, adverse to the interests of our town from a strategic standpoint is that? It just, it makes absolutely no sense. And, you know, I, I just wish that, that our leaders on the town council would show greater leadership and strategic thinking by, you know, charting a course that makes sense for us as a town, which is continuing to invest reasonably responsibly, responsibly, conservatively in our schools. Not just, you know, reducing costs because they want to reduce costs to get to an arbitrary number, doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. Penny, did I see your hand up before? I can unmute you. I got it.
I'm muted there, okay. I just, I, I think some of what I was going to say, others have said. But one of the things I wanted you to address at a certain point is, they didn't just cut the 950,000, they cut beyond that. And we had already, you know, given some cuts on our original budget. And so I'd like, I think it's important to tell people in this town what exactly we won't be delivering for the students of the district that we had planned to. And I just want to point out, you know, as we've said before, the, it's the labor costs, it's the union contract raise and everything that really drive our budget, that's a contract that the town council votes on. And, you know, it's, if we want to be a leading district, which is, I think, what this board wants to be, what this administration has delivered, we need steady leadership, we've had, we need innovation, every year, we need innovation, even in years when we're undergoing crises. We did that back in 2008, 2009, and we're, and we're trying to do it this year as well. If you don't move forward as a district every year, then you're going to fall behind. And we will quickly find ourselves not delivering the preeminent education in our area. And so I think that this feeling that just because we are on the top of the game, there has to be fat, is missing the point. And I think the town council should feel, they, they didn't do the right thing for the students of the district this year. And hopefully they will next year.
Thank you. Jen, your hand was up before? You're good, okay. Carl?
So actually, just building on, just building on what Penny said, it made me forget something that I meant to say before. So the 3.3% increase in salaries, that's on, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, there's one additional, I think, teacher from this year compared to last year. So it's all just So it's all just a built in increase that's flowing through contractually. It's it's inflation based, it's people becoming gaining seniority and people importantly gaining more skills. And so that goes into how they're compensated as well. That's so those are some of the dynamics that drive that increase. It's it's not a huge proliferation of people, you know, in terms of teachers and and other educators. It's it's just, that's how it's built in on on contracts that as Penny said, have been approved by the town council. So there's just not a lot of space elsewhere.
Great, thank you. It's true.
Right, I think many excellent points have been made, I, you know, won't. Add on, other than just to say, I share in the collective disappointment of the board and of many much of our community. I think it's really, at the end of the day, it's a call to revisit our town's. Long term strategic priorities within the context of our schools. And where as a talent, we want to be with our schools and how we look at our approach to funding. Our budgets going forward and the process that goes along with that. So that would be sort of my parting words on that. And then. I would also add equal importance to a thank you to the cabinet and all the people that were heavily involved in this process. It's the number of hours that our cabinet and Dr. Letty who spent on this and the passion and the belief in that this is the right thing to do for our students. And working towards a solution that we felt we could get behind and we all felt enthusiastic and we moved forward in our budget this year. And I want to say a special, special thank you to Roy Walter publicly for the extraordinary amount of work and thought and analysis that he put into this. He was a true partner with us, we asked many, many, many questions, we asked him to run every scenario we could think of. And he deserves a huge, you know, thank you and some recognition. And I hope that, you know, in the future, we'll be back side by side, working along with him to be ready to move this forward at a different point in time. So again, thank you to all of you, because I know this was a real labor of love and hope that, you know, we'll be back next year looking at this again. Thank you.
I will be sure to to share your gratitude with Roy tomorrow when I speak with him, thank you. Okay, so on the again, next steps with the budget, we are going to be working through the numbers, looking to see. You know what the best decisions are, that's that's the role and we'll keep you informed along the way. Thanks.
All right, so we have some action items. First up is our BOE policy, second read on the BOE policy number 6999 regarding graduation credits for our distance learning. It was first moved and seconded by Sherry and Jen at our last meeting, so any discussion, questions? Okay, seeing none, we're ready to vote, all in favor? Okay, unanimous? Thank you. And next up is the solar power purchase agreements at East, West and Saks. Is that Dr. Keating or Dr. Letty?
Yep, I'll just get started, you should have received this via email this afternoon, early in the afternoon. Can try to pull it up, Dr. Kitting, if you'd like me to try to do that, you just let me know. Because I I can try to share the document if that's helpful.
Well, if we could start with just an update of where we left off last week and then if we need to do it, we can.
Perfect, and for any, all the attendees, if they're interested, the documents themselves should be available on our website. If you just click into agenda and information on the website, so take it away.
Okay, so last week when the board met, we had provided you with a rather comprehensive review of the PPA proposal that we had before you. And compare that to a bill to own. And then we had informed you that we were going to be meeting with Davis Hill, our contractor, our developer, rather, on Tuesday. Dan and I met with them and then we also met with the Ed Resources Committee at the end of last week. So the things that have stayed the same. The East project, they gave us a four and a half cent PPA. Davis Hill did not believe that they could move off of that, they felt it was very. Aggressive on their part and they did not feel that there was room to move on that particular project. When it came to West project, they went from six cents per kilowatt hours on the PPA to five and six tenths of a cent. And so that change over the 20 year life will save us approximately $32,000. The final piece is with Saks and as you may recall, we had informed the board that we would have to replace the roof. On the cafeteria where the solar system is going to be installed, because it has maybe five to six years left to its useful life. When they really, they priced out the PPA, it went from a very broad general estimate of eight and three, eight cent, eight and three tenths cents to 11.1 cents. And we looked, when we looked at it that way, it really financially does not make sense to roll the roof replacement into the PPA. It's just over the life of it is is expensive. So we talked about it, Brian and I talked about it a little and looked at other areas where we might be able to support that project. And we talked about the fact that the south roof came in $400,000 less than budgeted last year. So we talked about the the idea of going back to the board of selectmen and the board of finance and asking them to transfer approximately 200,000. From the South project to the Saks project. And with that, it would still give them 200,000 that they would be able to roll back into their minus out of their debt plan. Which would still be good and it would give us the funding that we need to do the roof project. And so with that, it would come to the six cents PPA rather than the 6.3 cents PPA just for the solar portion of Saks. So that change, while if we take on the project and do the transfer with board of finance. Would save us another 15,000 over the life of the project at Saks. So all in, we're still recommending, we went through the Ed Resources Committee. Now they've edited out fairly thoroughly the other day. And I believe we have come to a consensus that it makes a lot of sense to move forward with going with the PPA rather than building to own. Is there any questions? And Dan's here with us, if you have any questions about the build out, about the project. I think Penny wants to say something.
Okay, great, I think it's a great agreement for the. For the district and for the town to be able to move forward with this solar. Yes, my one question would be, is if you thought there were any more, without revealing internal negotiations. If you thought if we were able to get the money to do the Saks roof by ourselves, if we should go back and try and get that. I think you said it was 6.0 or 6.3 down, we're 6.0 now. Taking the roof out to a lower level. Or if you think that that's the the best and I'm certainly willing to approve it and allow you the room to negotiate that a little bit further.
Yeah, so I I think what we, the conclusion based on the analysis is that. The decrement is 5.1 cents per kilowatt hours over 20 years for the roof. And it's not worth it to come into, it's like 50 or 60,000 dollars more than doing a built, you know, building it ourselves. So the bottom line there is that it doesn't make sense to go to roll that into the PPA.
Oh, no, no, I under, I agree with you on that, I probably wasn't clear what what I was saying is given that we'd be taking that out of that PPA. Do you think there, we could get the rate at Saks any closer to the rates that we're getting at the other schools?
Yeah, the the issue with the Saks is that it has to be, and and Dan knows more about the assembly than I do. But it's the assembly that it has to be, it can't be racked, it has to be bolted in. So the assembly for that roof is more expensive than the other roofs. But we did get them down three tenths of a cent. Okay, and the other thing we're going to do is we get closer to signing the contract is interest rates go down further. We'll we'll approach them to bring down the PPA prices at that time.
Joanne, as I recall, they've agreed that the price can move down but won't move up regardless of what happens with interest rates, is that true?
Yeah, and the procurement of the price for the panels. Okay.
So there's a a motion here. To approve, as you know, this is the same power purchase agreement that we used in the past. So it's been carefully vetted by the board, by the attorneys. To authorize the superintendent to execute the contract. So you know, I've been in contact with First Selectman Moynihan today. I shared with him what the we were planning this evening at the board and that this motion was going to be on the agenda. He shared back that on Monday, there's an infrastructure committee meeting. And I let him know that Penny would be happy to give an update on this process and what's occurring here with the infrastructure committee. And then what we did in the past was go to the board of selectmen to and ask for the first selectmen to also be authorized to sign on the towns behalf. So that both the board of ed and the and the town would be signing the agreement, knowing that it's a it's a long term 20 year agreement. So that board of selectmen, who is in charge of capital in town and the board of ed are on the same page. So there is a meeting, I think tomorrow even with the board of selectmen. But Kevin felt that he'd like it to go through the infrastructure committee first and then could go to the the board of selectmen immediately after that, if all goes well.
Their motion to approve? Deanna, second, Carl, all in favor? Okay, unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, Katrina, I just wanted to to thank Dr. Keating and Dan for all their work. I know, you know, there was a lot of work spent over the last couple of weeks trying to get all the information to the committee and to the board. And so I just wanted to thank them for their efforts. I think this can be a really amazing opportunity for the schools and for the community, so thank you.
Agreed, it's it's one of the many cost, cost saving initiatives underway in our district.
Yes.
Thank you.
This Carl, yeah, so just to put some numbers on it, Dr. Keating ran spreadsheets between the three. Solar arrays on the three schools. It's a net present value savings of 1.5 million dollars using the the town's borrowing rate. So it's it's a it's a huge win and certainly worth the $200,000 on the the south. The, sorry, the Saks school roof to allow that part of the of the project to go forward. So really good work, Dr. Keating, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will return to public comment, Dr. Letty, if you want to.
I would be glad to and I'll. Yeah, I will remind our attendees, if they would like to speak, they should raise their hand and I will bring you in one at a time. And we'll just wait a minute, okay? Janie, give me a moment to allow you to talk and you'll be in. Okay.
Can everyone hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, great, good evening, everyone, this is Janie Conideris, 90 Beacon Hill. There is no doubt that town council's decision to cut this budget was very difficult to hear. Knowing that 2,000 students are now at risk of another year of sleep deprivation. That having been said, I just wanted to speak up this evening to say, please do not give up on this change. There has been ample opportunity for all community members to voice their opinions, whether it's speaking or letter writing. But at the end of the day, this should not come down to a popularity contest, this is a health issue. When every medical organization says this change needs to happen. When the pediatricians in town say this change needs to happen. And when we know that many successful elementary schools begin at or before 8:00 AM. When we do have an almost cost neutral solution that can make this change happen. Why wouldn't we pursue this change to make sure our kids are as healthy as possible this fall? Please do not shelve this initiative, we have the time to do the test runs now. Maybe the almost cost neutral solution wasn't our top choice, but we wouldn't be reinventing the wheel. We've seen this option before, it was presented as an option by our bus consultants. We will have savings by having closed schools for three months, perhaps those savings can be used to offset any costs associated with a different solution. If we believe student health is a priority, if we truly believe it. Then let's adjust and make this healthy change a different way. What is more important than student health? What trumps sending our kids to school with more resilience, happier, better rested and ready to learn? What program is more important than that? This is emotional intelligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Janie. Okay, anyone else?
Okay. No other comments, Dr. Letty, I'll turn it back to you for announcements and future business.
Oh, well, our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is Monday, April 20th. Given, as we've said before, the pace of things and the challenges that are presented by the closure. I appreciate the board's flexibility if we need to get a meeting together to do something on behalf of our kids or our schools. At the same time, recognize that this is a four day weekend for all of our families with Good Friday and then the Monday after Easter. So I wish everyone a restful and restorative and rejuvenating four days over the weekend. Hopefully we have some weather equal to what we had today. And then we'll have our three days next week of distance learning and then a three day weekend as well. As you'll recall, that was the spring break week and again, I commend the board, I think it was the right and wise decision. To to hold a couple of distance learning days during that week. And I I want to say just while we're on the line publicly, a very special thank you to Vivian Burzel. The, as you know, the president of the NCEA. Just not only just for the spring break and partnering with that, but really for the amazing partnership, support, help, work that she's done throughout this close. You know, she has worked to lead the teachers through some really tough times already. And a lot of the success we're having today is also a result of Vivian's really good work in in supporting her step, her teachers. And really showing true leadership in her in everything that she's doing. So I want the board to know that, I want the community to know that, that just how lucky we are to have such a great partner in Vivian and the NCEA. Who who really are just doing amazing work every day. You know, this is a. A challenge for all and they they've stepped up and continue to step up every day. So I want to say that about from about Vivian, I want the board to know that, I want the community to know that and just how lucky we are. Beyond that, well, I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you, Vivian, and thank you to all the the teachers and others out there helping our kids, we appreciate it.
Yeah. Absolutely, makes a difference. Then, so if more readings are needed, I will certainly let you know right away and and we'll post and go. But otherwise, let's unplug if we can these next, you know, over the break, over those four days. And hopefully sit in a comfortable chair outside in a sunny day and read a good book. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian, and thanks for your comments, I I would agree that it's the strength and we can't underestimate the strength of the partnerships. That are in place with all of our amazing employees and the hard work of. Ms. Bianca and our HR department and every, all around, it's it's the reason why I think we're seeing such success with our program. Because of the all hands on tech approach and the hard work that everyone's doing. So I want to echo, you know, on behalf of the board, your comments as well and our gratitude to everyone out there in our district that's working hard every day. And doing things, maybe they're not, they're not, their normal days have changed and their responsibilities have changed. And we recognize that and we appreciate it truly, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, motion to adjourn? Penny, second, Sherry, all in favor? All right, thank you, good night, everyone.